The hour of 6:30 having arrived, I will call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alder Curry.
Here.
Alder Curry is present. Alder Duncan?
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Evers is present. Alder Field?
Here.
Alder Field is present. President Figaro Cole?
Here.
President Figaro Cole is present. Alder Gov. Rosen? Alder Gov. Rosen is present. Alder Uguere?
Here.
Alder Uguere is present. Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'm present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Knox?
Present.
Alder Knox is present. Alder Latimer Burris?
Here.
Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Alder Mayadze? Alder Mayadze is present. Alder Rumel?
Present.
Alder Rumel is present. Alder Tischler? Alder Tischler is present. Alder Baviera?
Here.
Alder Baviera is present. Alder Vitterver?
Present.
Alder Vitterver is present. Alder Wehelié?
Present.
Alder Wehelié is present. Alder Bennett? Alder Bennett is present. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Conklin is present. Madam Mayor, we have forum.
Thank you. As usual, I will ask that we remember we're here to conduct the business of the people of the city of Madison and hopes that we can do that with civility, grace, and kindness. And in particular, ask that all refrain from using profanity in any remarks. And then I will ask if there are any disclosures or recusals on today's agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the presentation of the consent agenda. President Figaro Cole.
Can you give me a quick?
Yeah.
Alders, if you could mute yourselves. Thank you. President Figaro Cole?
Thank you, Mayor. A consent agenda is moved with the recommended action listed for each item on the agenda, including public hearings except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, items which Alders have separated out for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda, agenda items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. And agenda items that are supermajority items. Supermajority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Legis star 87043, reapproving a certified survey map of property owned by Winston at Churchill LLC, located at 4205 Porridge Road on District 17. 14 votes required. Legis star item 86600, amending the public health budget to accept grant funds from Nurse Family Partnership and create a 1FTE public health nurse and 1FTE NFP coordinator position for the NFP program. 15 votes required. Legis star item 86826, amending the 2025 adopted operating budget for the City of Madison Fire Department to accept $12,462.05 from the Wisconsin Department of Military Affairs Division of Emergency Management for the City of Madison has made regional emergency responses WHMRS equipment grant. 15 votes required. Legis star item 86853, substitute amending the Economic Development Division's EDD 2025 adopted capital budget to transfer $3,780,000 from the TID 51 Capital Program 99011 to the Land Banking Program 12640, and authorizing the city's execution of a purchase and sale agreement with JR Properties of Wisconsin LLC for the purchase of the property located at 1814 South Park Street for land banking purposes, authorizing the expenditure of funds for environmental assessment, title work, closing costs, holding costs, and demolition work for the same property, all totaling $4,330,000, and authorizing the indemnification of the seller. 15 votes required. Agenda items with recommendations different from the agenda. Legis star 86825, amending Section 33.016 of the Madison General Ordinance related to Alder appointees to board commissions and committees to change the appointment terms. The CCEC Committee recommended a referral of the item for the CCEC meeting of March 11th and back to council on March 11th. Legis star item 85A51, amending various sections of chapter 37 of the Madison General Ordinance related to public stormwater system, including erosion control, to update certain stormwater code provisions. Introduction of new business for referral without debate, Alder Conklin recommendations. Change the referral dates to Board of Public Works of February 26, 2025, and back to common council on March 11th, 2025. Agenda items excluded, request by Alders or speakers before noon on February 11. Legis star 85825, amended Section 33.016 of the Madison General Ordinance related to Alder appointments to board commissions and committees to change the appointment terms. Introductions from the floor. Legis star item 87158, authorizing amendments to the term sheet authorized by legis star file number 86170 regarding a tax increment finance loan to EC Residential LLC or its assigned needs, and a grant to CDA related to the construction of affordable housing at 5546 Element Way in the University Research Park and Tax Increment District 46. Finance, that will go to Finance Committee on February 17 and back to common council on February 25. Agenda items with corrections. Legis star file 86996, approving the amendment to the project plan for the Tax Increment District 44 at Rose Year Clerk, City of Madison, to be updated to districts, to be updated the title to replace District 6 and District 12 with District 3 and District 15. And that's the end of my consent agenda.
Thank you. President Figaro Cole, we also have speakers registered on item 40, which is, I don't have the legis star number in front of me, but so we'll exclude item 40?
86A53.
As well, and thank you, yes, legis star 86853. Are there any additional exclusions requested from the consent agenda? Alder Tischler?
Yes, item 32 was discussed at the CCEC this afternoon, so I would like to remove my request to exclude item 32 from the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other exclusions requested from the consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, then I'll just go through that one more time. The following agenda items are supermajority. Item 33 requires 14 votes. Items 34 and 39 require 15 votes. On item 32, the recommendation is to rerefer to CCEC on March 11th and back to council on March 11th. On item 46, the recommendation is to change the referral dates to BPW on February 26th and council on March 11th. Item 40 is excluded. We have one introduction from the floor, and we have a correction on item 66 on the Alder Manic Districts impacted. Are there any additional items on the consent agenda? Do I need to go through that again? No? Okay. Then President Figaro Cole, a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. And that will take us to public comment. Our only item for public comment tonight is item 40. Legis star 86853, a substitute amending the Economic Development Division's capital budget to transfer funds from TID 51 to the Land Banking Program for purchases and expenses associated with the property at 1814 South Park Street. On item 40, we have three registrants wishing to speak. Our first registrant is Sarah Branch of District 14. Our next registrant will be Kena Atkinson, to be followed by Alex Booker. Do we have Sarah Branch?
Yes, I'm present.
Go ahead.
So my concerns with the agenda moving it forward is because I am a small business owner who rents space in that side of that building. I am currently the owner of Earthly Temptation, which resides there. And I just was wondering how would the city help tenants like me who is inside that space? If we have to relocate because my business is there, especially since I am in the heart of the city and serve the community that needs me, so I have a lot of customers that come there for different herbs and sound baths and such, helping to address their mental health needs. I've been in business there for about two and a half years, and I had connections with the city to help me get in the space on the zoning, as well as like the signage and opening net. So I was wondering if I had to relocate, would there be any help from the city? Also, over there, the rent is very affordable, so if I wasn't able to find another location that fits my needs, would the city offer to pay any of that additional rent? Because things are more higher these days, and it's really hard finding affordable properties in Madison.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Kena Atkinson of District 6, to be followed by Alex Booker. Do we have Kena?
Yep, you have me here.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I was just the same thing as what Sarah was saying. I just wanted to know how the city was going to be supporting her. She's a woman-owned, black business, and a lot of the people who shops there with her on the south side of Madison, they love coming there, number one, because the location is accessible. It reaches a lot of the people who live on the south side, the east side, the west side. People from all different parts of Madison can easily access that space. So I'm wondering if there's a plan in place for the city to be able to provide the support to the tenants such as Sarah, especially seeing as she's only been there for two and a half years. She's one of the very few black women-owned businesses in the city who has a brick and mortar space. And so the financial investment in her even being able to get this business built out and then operational is a big, you know, to have to go through losing the space after she's been establishing her business in that location. I just want to know if the city is going to, you know, make it a priority to be able to support her in this unexpected change, because it'll for sure impact not only the business, but also the people who count on this business in the community. I know that Earthly Temptations, they provide support to the high schools in terms of, I've seen them provide workshop for the high schoolers at West High School to community members on the south side. The people who come to the, you know, the markets and the events, they, like she said, they provide sound bath, they provide mental health, they provide holistic resources for people who may have struggles with paying for, you know, prescription pharmaceuticals. They seek Earthly Temptations for a holistic route. So I just want to know how Earthly Temptations is going to be supported through these changes.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Alex Booker of District 20. We have Alex. Doesn't look like Alex is in the room. Do we have Alex online?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So I am speaking up for Earthly Temptations as well, and also for all of the tenants that are in that building. I agree with a lot of the motion, the things that people were saying earlier, but I really want to know like how the tenants were thought of in this process, if they were reached out to. I know that there is a restaurant that was actually physically building space within that strip, as well as the beauty supply store that just moved from a building that was previously purchased to this building that is now being purchased. And so I want to know like how are they going to be compensated for their move and the sweat equity that they put into that strip and that space? A lot of black and brown businesses have created that whole area, and they've been working really hard to make it what it is. And so now, as the city decides to develop and see it as something valuable, where it was overshadowed and looked to the side for so long, how are they going to be compensated equitably for their time and commitment into the space and what they bring into the space? And how are they going to find space within that Park Street area that is going to be comparable rent prices to what they're currently paying for what they bring to the community? Just because the city is developing and growing should not mean that people who have established their businesses within their own community, that they should not have to move or be without because of that.
Thank you. We have no further registrants on item 40. Are there questions for any of the registrants? Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. For Sarah just mentioning, I wanted to ask you to begin with to talk about like your startup cost to open the business, if you wouldn't mind sharing that.
Do we have Sarah still?
Yes. So when we first opened the business, we spent about $10,000 in there to first open the business. Speaking of things of products, our signage, we also had to renovate, so to remove the floors and the counter space as well as painting. And then we spent additional money, you know, marketing and just drawing in to our customers to let them know that we are located there on the south side. So in total, just in our first year, we had spent about $15,000 getting the space ready.
And then was that 15,000 that you already had? Or did you have to do some level of fundraising to hit that goal?
No, I did not have any money when I started. That I probably had about $1,000. So to get that money, we had to do, we had got Akiva, as well as we got a small grant in which we had to fill out all the paperwork for, and then we did also ran a few different GoFundMes on different platforms to raise money to get that space open.
And then last, if you wouldn't mind just talking about like the, like the impact of having to move. I know you mentioned a little bit of it, but like what would be the impact on you having to move financially?
Financially, we don't have any money saved for the move, so the, it would be a really hard hit on us because just in this time period, it is our slow season. So we're just recuperating for our finances, so we don't have money to move. In fact, we never planned on moving. It was our goal to stay in the space and to help serve our community for the next two years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions?
Thank you. I want to continue with Sarah. Sarah, and you talked, and thank you very much, Alder Sabrina Madison, for asking those questions. That was on my list. So the notification of your move, what has been the collaboration between your business and the city in being notified of the move? What have been the support? What has been the communication between you and the city, is my question?
So initially, I had gotten no contact about the building being so like in person. Only thing that I ever received to my mailbox was like a, I don't even know what it is, a mailer or a flyer saying, hey, this, this location is, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what it said, but it was saying like this location is up for redevelopment, and there is a city council meeting planned on this, this date. I received two of those postcards, but that's all I had received. I learned about the sale going out from a news article, and that made me be aware of it. So then I contacted the landlord and asked him if he was going to sell, because I had conversations with him in the past about selling, and he told me he will never sell. So it became a shock to me that he in fact did decide to sell, and because I didn't hear anything from the city or from an Alder, no one came into my business to talk to me about it.
Okay, my follow-up question, one question is that was there a move-out date or a period that you were given? I understand your conversation, you had no knowledge, but in the two postcards that you did receive, was there, or something from either the city or your landlord, was there a move-out date that you can give us?
So from the postcard, the post, the postcard was just referencing to come to the city council meeting, I guess. After emailing my landlord, I connected with Jasmine from the Progress Center, and then she reached out to someone from the city, who then CC'd someone in who eventually, by the name of Matt. So just yesterday, I only heard of it officially, and Matt, I believe it was Matt, said that I shall be able to stay to the end of my lease and possibly be given an extension.
Alder, just to clarify, she couldn't possibly have been given a move-out date because the city council hasn't approved the sale yet?
Okay, I do understand that, but I'm just trying to establish the method, the time of communication between her. That's what I'm, and my follow-up questions will be with staff.
Thank you, Alder.
I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions, so we'll thank our registrants. And with the indulgence of the body, I'd like to take a moment to welcome Troop 16 from Blessed Sacrament, who are here observing our meeting. to welcome Troop Sixteen from Blessed Sacrament who are here observing our meeting. I understand, looking for some badges. So welcome. We're delighted to have you observe the civic process and hope that perhaps someday some of you will be sitting in some of these seats. So we're pleased to have you here. Thanks for joining us. All right. So that is our public comment. And our next item is item two, a staff presentation from our Director of Transportation. Tom? Are you, are you going to talk from back there?
It might be easiest. Let's see if, if I'm allowed to share. I'll, I've been emailing with Ariana. Let's see. There we go. And I promised Alder Ferrero Cole that I would, I would keep this at 20 minutes. I'm going to do this. Okay, Madison transportation, history and the future. First, a quick thank you to the Wisconsin Historic Society, Dave Mullenoff's book, The History of the Former Dev Years. Stu Levitin had two books that were really important as well as Strand Associates, a former employer that gave me some photos. Sixty slides and I'm going to do this just with touchpoints. First, let's look back thousands of years ago. You know, sometimes we think of our history as a history of settlers, but people have been living here for millennia. And so if you look at this, this is a map from the Mullenoff and these are the indigenous paths in the Madison area. If you superimpose our roadways, you can see how they kind of interact with the indigenous paths. You can see University Avenue, East Washington, Park Street, Fish Hatchery. If we go to more modern times, seller times, Madison's first plat was in 1836. At that time, our population was 170 people. So just imagine that. So think of how ambitious it was to draw a plat like that and say, we're going to fill these parcels up. This plat was instrumental in Madison being chosen as the capital city. But to fill up all those plats, you need people and to get people, you need railroads. Madison's first railroad was Milwaukee Road. It went from Milwaukee to Prairie du Chene and was in 1854. The dream was to have nine railroads serving Madison. But if you look, there's a stub there. That railroad was also supposed to connect with Madison, but during a recession in the 1860s, it stubbed out there. This was a problem for Madison because the Sun Prairie Railroad was much less expensive than the railroad serving Madison. So farmers were going to Sun Prairie to ship their goods and Sun Prairie was becoming a boomtown, getting a lot more attention, a lot more population than Madison was. One of the city leaders, Simeon Mills, said, that can't be. We need more competition. We need another rail line into Madison. So he proposed a rail line from Beloit that went into Madison via Johnson Street. And there was a person, a former mayor, Levi Vilas, who happened to live on Johnson Street and he thought that was a very bad idea. And so he, he was able to squash that, but they did have a city committee. They met for three months and they decided that the rail line should go on the north shore of Lake Manona. And so the rail line you see here is basically the rail lines that exist today. So we had the water tunnel Sun Prairie Rail Line in 1869, the Baraboo Line in 1871, Illinois Central in 1887. So by 30 years later, we had the nine lines that we wanted. By 1899, we had 148 trains per day. Imagine the disruption that caused in downtown Madison. So that was inner city. That's how people got between cities, but inside the city, people still mostly use horses. This is a market between Blount to Livingston Street, between Dayton and Mifflin Streets. You could just see horses, carts. This is East Washington in 1914. Isn't that kind of interesting? You know, horses was, was the way people got around. I'm going to take a little side path to the Parks and Pleasure Drive. The Parks and Pleasure Drive Association, of which Olin was a member, began in 1892. And it was really formative in a lot of the roadways we have around us. Lake Mendota Drive, Sherman Avenue, Tenny Bridge, Manona Drive. The one thing about this though is these roads were not used so much for transportation, but more for recreational purposes. On the weekends, you wanted to get out of the city and so these Parks and Pleasure Drives were a way for you to get out of the city. Similarly for bikes, there was a bike club in 1880, but the Madison Bicycle Club was established in 1891. And it was primarily recreational. You had to be able to afford one of these newfangled things, but it was, it was a hot thing. In fact, Madison had five bicycle manufacturers during this decade. It wasn't until the early 1900s that bicycle became a workman's transportation tool. Let's look at the beginning of transit. Our first mule-drawn bus was in 1884, November 16th. Down at the base of the hill by Williamson Street, there was a shed with 50 mules. This, these mules brought the trolley up to the Capitol and back. Going up King Street, it took three mules. Otherwise, it was two mules. Every passenger had to pay five cents. Unfortunately, every passenger ride costs nine cents. And so you can see mass transit has had it rough for hundreds of years, right? That went on for about eight years. However, Madison needed something better. And so the electric trolley was instituted in 1892. We were the, the third municipality in Wisconsin to get it. Appleton got it and Milwaukee got it. Within a year, they were able to build the first line. These things went wicked fast, 30 miles an hour. So imagine being used to going on a, on a trolley, a mule trolley, right? And then all of a sudden you're in an electric trolley that goes 30 miles an hour. If you look at the wheels, they're, they're centered in the middle, right? And so college kids, being college kids, would move themselves to the end of the trolley and then they would rock the trolley and try and get it, tip it and get it off its tracks. And so, you know, some things never change, right? If we look at how the trolley influenced Madison development, here are the three lines that eventually were in effect in Madison, the red line, the white line and the blue line. This opened up thousands of acres for development. You didn't have to live within a half mile of the Capitol to get to work. You could live several miles away and get to work for five cents. By 1899, there were 3,000 riders per day. Some people wanted to live a little bit farther out. So developers were developing lands in the Coma, Shorewood Hills, Maple Bluff and Manona. And the way they were able to sell their lots is by providing bus service. They provided bus service using the internal combustion engine, which was kind of new. It costs 10 cents a ride for that, but it allowed you to live a little farther away. So it was double the cost, but still opened up acres. Madison's first car was in 1901, but probably what was more important was the Model T, which was introduced in 1908. And that was transformative. By 1916, autos outnumbered horses in Madison. So that's just eight years after the introduction of the Model T. Traffic got so bad that they had to institute one-way traffic around Capitol Square by 1921. That's just 13 years after the Model T. This is the funeral for Bob LaFollette in 1925 and just look at how many cars there are there. State Street in 1928. In fact, our rail cars even transitioned to buses in 1934 and 1935. The cool thing about this is if you look at the bus, it still has the Madison Railways Company on the side. We still have one of these buses in the Angersaw facility. So it's, it's kind of a neat little thing. Buses became critical to our transportation infrastructure. This is a picture from 1953 and if, if you count, you can count seven buses. People needed buses to get to work, to get to shopping. It was a way you got around. But then at the same time, larger forces began to change city form. Frank Lloyd Wright was one of them. If you have motor vehicles that can drive you to and from work, why do you need to live in the city? You can live away from the city. Frank Lloyd Wright came up with this idea of Broad Acre City, but it's really a misnomer. It wasn't really a city. It was kind of a way to live in the suburbs and not be part of the city. William Levitt, he's considered the father of the modern suburbs. He developed tract house housing, okay? He, he divided up building a house into 27 steps and he could produce 32 houses a day. And he could sell these houses for $8,000 a house, okay? So in today's dollars, in today's dollars, that's under $100,000 still. So that's how inexpensive he was able to produce housing. The National Housing Act from 1934 changed the way our loans worked. So instead of a 10-year mortgage, you could get a 30-year mortgage. That again opened up and made housing affordable. And then the Federal Eight Highway Act of 1956 paid for roads so that you could actually live wherever you wanted to, drive and get to work. So this is kind of the, the result of all those forces. The modern suburb, you have the inexpensive housing from tracts, the home loans, which made it attainable for just an average working family to have a home and then the freeway that got you to work. This happened also in Madison. To the left, you can see a traditional neighborhood which is right around Regent Street and to the right, you have a more suburban form, which is more in the southwest portion of the, the city. The density is quite a bit different. In the Regent Street area, we have 54 dwellings per units per acre, whereas in the more peripheral and suburban areas, it's only six dwelling units per acre. So that kind of brings us to Dane County population growth. So the blue line is the population growth for the city of Madison and the orange line is the population growth for everything in Dane County that's not the city. So you can see from basically the 1860s to 1970, people wanted to move into the city. The city had shopping, had shows. It's where you wanted to be. But basically from 1970 to, to really to 2010, it reversed itself. People wanted to live in the suburbs and then commute to the city. In more recent years, in the last 10 to 15 years, I think the suburbs and the city have grown kind of at an equal pace. This is the city of Madison and annexation by decade. The lighter colors are annexed more recently. When you're in the peripheral areas of the city, it requires more reliance on auto transportation. It's just hard. If you're on the east side, east of the interstate, it's just hard to get around without an automobile. So that kind of creates a catch-22 situation if you're providing transit. You know, a lot of people in the suburban areas of our city say, well, I would ride bus if I could get more buses or if there were more buses. The hard thing is, is that our suburbs only have six dwelling units per acre versus the 54, which means that we have to travel six times as far to catch the same number of riders. And the, the streets aren't in a nice grid, but they're kind of, kind of windy too. So it's a little harder to navigate with buses. We leaned as a city into the car. We built the John Nolan Drive Causeway. And if you think about that, if you're an engineer, it's just flat-out flabbergassing. We just full-on built a road in the middle of a lake. You know, who does that anymore, right? This is the master plan of highways from the City Plan Commission in 1955. You can see that University Avenue, Johnson Street and Broom Street, they were all going to be freeways. The Madison Belt Line was approved in 1948, 49 and built in the early 1950s. Here's a connection with I-90. This is kind of the height of modern transportation, the system interchange here. If you have cars, you need parking, right? And so this is called pigeonhole parking, Manchester Department Store Parking. It was on the north side of the square and this is how you would park your car. In fact, parking became a big issue in the 1960s. Stu Levitin says it was the key issue. This was the Law Park Parking Lot in 1958. One of the better ways to use lakeside property, don't you think? This is a dotty ramp in 1958. Basically in the 1960s, the city and the county constructed four parking ramps. When I entered my job about seven years ago, I found this postcard in the files. It's easy to shop in Madison. Here's your guide to over 10,000 parking spaces in Madison. It was really felt like you needed to have this. You needed to have parking if you wanted your businesses to stay alive. This is State Street in 1969. Look at the, the traffic on State Street. So you see that cyclist in the lower right? He's breaking the law because bicycles were outlawed on State Street and the Capitol Square in 1965. By the city council. Imagine that. As we lean into the car though, we lost some things, right? We lost rail service about 50 years ago, 1971, because why take the train somewhere if you can drive somewhere, right? And then we also had problems with buses. People weren't riding the bus as much, but a lot of people still needed the bus. In 1968, due to a strike and declining revenue, voters approved the purchase of the Madison Bus Company by the city. So basically if we do have a big overview of Madison transportation, really from the 1860s to 1935, we were focused on more compact development and we have to use mass transit to get around because that's really all we have. After that though, we have the car and because we have the car, we're able to, to build a little bit bigger lots and we have less, more dispersed development and it's less compact. We're in 2025 and we have to wonder what, what direction we want to go. Now there were some unintended consequences with this in terms of cost, climate and life. Street cost. The picture on the left is a, a street in, in my neighborhood is built in 1913. And the street on the right was built 100 years later in 2014. It's 48 feet wide, 20 feet wider than the, the street in mine. Both accommodate parking, but one costs 60, about 50 to 70% more expensive than the other. The same is true when we look at our parking garages. We can also look at vehicle miles traveled. In the United States, since 1971, our population has increased 60%, but our vehicle miles traveled has increased 190%. So people are driving almost double what they did in the 1970s. Climate, this is our carbon emissions. The blue is the atmosphere carbon and the gray is kind of the carbon that humanity has put into the atmosphere through furnaces and smelting and the like. If you superimpose our temperature on top of it, it correlates pretty closely, doesn't it? It doesn't mean it's cause, but sure seems like there's a relationship, right? The picture on the left is the forest recently in the LA. I grew up in California and we just didn't have fires like we had now. You know, I, we never had the fires that California is seeing year after year after year. There is a, there is a change. There's also a cost in life. These are the motor vehicle deaths and rates in the United States from 1913 to 2020. In 2022, there's 46,000 deaths per year due to the motor vehicle. The US has three to four times the death rate per inhabitant as other peer countries for traffic fatalities. So three times more. Why is that? You know, one might ask, why are we so different than all of these other countries? Since 2010, pedestrian fatalities are up 72%, bicyclists up 55%. All fatalities are up 30%. So it kind of begs the question, if our transportation choices were a pill, would the FDA approve it? Right? You have this magic pill, okay, and it allows you to go wherever you want to go, right? And live wherever you live and it's only going to kill 46,000 people a day or a year. It's a, it's kind of an interesting choice, right? So how is Madison responding? We're trying to change the paradigm. We're focusing on safety instead of relieving congestion. A lot of this is through our Vision Zero program. Safe Streets Madison is an offshoot on, of that program where we focus on speed reduction. It's on the high injury network. We have a new scoring metric that provides a voice to all Madison neighborhoods, not just neighborhoods that have connections or know how to get things done. We've completed 103 projects in We've completed 103 projects and have 71 approved. Despite that, we still have over 600 project requests on our list. We have the Complete Green Streets ordinance that was enacted about two years ago. Back, I've been designing roads for 35 to 40 years. And basically, what we used to do is we find out how many lanes we need for cars. And then if there's any space left over, we put in sidewalks or bike lanes. Well, this ordinance changes that in that pedestrians, buses and bikes are at the top of the modal hierarchy, and cars are more at the bottom. How does this play out? An example is this Hammersley Road project that was recently done, right? Before, Hammersley Road didn't have any sidewalk on it. Bike lanes, but there were some fast cars. We retrofitted a two-lane road in there, put in a separated path so that you can feel safe if you're riding, if you're a child riding. And we were able to do it in a way that preserved the majority of the trees. This is another example of retrofitting Complete Green Streets into, this is Seago Road. Before, I think this was a four-lane roadway. We only really needed two lanes, so we were able to put in separated bicycle facilities, pedestrian facilities, and intersperse a little bit of parking. Our transit network redesign. The routes are more frequent, and the ridership is increasing. Weekend and evening service is considerably better. If you lived on the other side of the interstate, you didn't have bus service on weekends. You had to walk to the other side of the interstate to get bus service. There are challenges with this. Riders have to walk a little bit farther because we had to redistribute our things. I hear sometimes about people saying, oh, our buses are empty. Our buses are empty. And they're not empty. The 2023 average is 25 riders per revenue hour. 25 riders per revenue hour, okay? So in order for us to have 25 riders per revenue hour, that means that some hours, we have 150 riders, right? But that means some hours, we have five riders. But the people that are riding, you know, when there's five riders, maybe at 10 at night, they maybe got to work during the day, and they needed that ride home. If we look at things nationally, of the 852 directly operated bus systems in America, Metro Transit is in the top 6% in passengers per revenue hour. It's in the best 10% in cost per passenger. And it's in the top 5% in the number of passengers served. So we were also able to implement the Bus Rapid Transit. It's the largest project the city's ever undertaken, almost $200 million, 72% federally funded. It serves 95,000 residents and 100,000 jobs. This is a picture I took just during some random Wednesday evening. You know, people are using this system. Ridership. If we compare November, December of '24 versus '23, system-wide, our ridership is up 10%. Route A, which is the BRT route, is up 20%. We'd like to do the same thing for the North-South. The North-South will provide access to 97,000 people, 78,000 jobs. The North-South route goes, you know, 51% of the families on the North-South route are low-income families, people of color, you know, car-free households, seniors. It's an important route. We'd like to put some of the amenities in the North-South as we have in the East-West. We'd like to have a shared-use path on Park Street. We'd like to reconstruct it. Some of this is going to be dependent on funding. You know, we have a lot of money, but we need a little bit more money to get everything done that we'd like to get done on this. And then finally, I'd like to talk about parking. Parking has probably had the most significant decade since the 1960s. They've basically constructed three parking garages, 1,700 spaces. They've enacted a transportation demand management ordinance, and they've integrated the PEOs. They took basically a whole department that was inside the police department and put it inside of their department. So there. Oh, it's 23 minutes. Sorry.
Thank you, Tom. Questions for Tom? Alder Madsen.
Yeah, December of last year, they talked about the current Southern Wisconsin Regional Rail Network. Can you talk about if there's anything moving forward with that?
With the rail?
Yes.
Yes. So we are hoping to do mail. And actually, the mayor, I'm just going to say, and some staff met with rail officials even today. And so we'll be releasing a preliminary report that screens our station locations. A lot of this will be dependent on the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's study and how fast and how far they get along with that. But it's very much at the top of our mind. And like I said, the mayor and some city staff have met with rail officials even today.
Okay. And how close are we to getting funding for the North and South?
We have been recommended for $118 million of federal funding. And so, and the money has been appropriated, but it hasn't been apportioned. And, you know, that's where we're proceeding as if we're going to build that line. If you look at the East-West, it took us 12 years before it was proposed and when it actually got built. We hope that we can build it in the '26, '27 timeframe, but maybe it takes five years instead or six years instead. We are proceeding like it's going to be built.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, thank you for that presentation. Can't believe I found so much enjoyment out of it. So thank you for the funny parts of it. But super interesting to see the city of Madison, especially for someone who didn't, you know, I came here in '91. So I don't have that kind of visual. And for you guys to actually experience the history of transportation, what a night to experience that. So honestly, I don't have any questions. I just had to get going, and I didn't want to, I wanted to just say thank you for sharing this and encourage all the others to please share these in their blogs for all the people to experience it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is, so, and this might be more of a budget question, but I just want to, so were there any kind of discussions about how Madison would approach covering the 28% of the funding that isn't covered by federal? Was it looking at other municipalities, connecting routes? Can you give me a little idea on that?
Yeah, I think you're talking about...
Yeah, for what project, Alder?
The East-West?
Yes. Well, you talked, I think your 28% was the total, the total thing. But if you want to talk about just generally, how will we make up the percentage that's not covered by federal funding?
Yeah, so the East-West was 72% federal. We were able to leverage several things. We were able to leverage TIF. I think it was TIF 57 on the west side for some of the funding. And then some creativity through land donations, the Brayton Lot, and then also the lot where the West Transfer Charging Station is, was donated to the project. So between the TIF, basically on Minona Point Road, and those two property donations that covered what was needed for the East-West. And so that's all paid for and pretty much done. On the North-South, we also are hoping to leverage TIF on Park Street, and it's already in the TIF plan. And then we're also hoping that we can get some help from WISDOT. We had a meeting with WISDOT today to see how they might approach this. And so that's what we're looking at right now for the North-South.
So part of the WISDOT part is because highway, because it's a highway?
Yep. A lot of the North-South is on either a connect, they're both on connecting highways, on 113 and then on 151, Park Street and Northport Packers. And so we're interacting with them and seeing what they can help with and what they can't.
Okay. And was there any, you know, concept of extending either one of these routes to one of our municipalities? Could you talk about that a little bit?
Well, actually, the East-West already does extend to Sun Prairie as well as kind of the American Center. And then on the west side, it extends into Middleton and West Madison. The, for it to be called BRT, it has to have 15-minute service. So right now, because it extends into Sun Prairie and with half-hour service, it can't be called BRT, but it's the same BRT buses. If you're on High Crossing, you'll see those buses as they cross over. The North-South will extend into Pittsburgh. And so, and that will be a full BRT, and that will have 15-minute service as well.
So are we anticipating some partnership financing to those connections? Or is that not something that...
Yeah, they, our partner communities participate two ways. One is they help provide the local match for the federal money that's spent in their municipalities. So Pittsburgh and Sun Prairie both contribute to the capital cost. But then they also contribute to the, participate in the operating costs for the bus service that operates in their communities as well. So the bus operating costs in Sun Prairie, Middleton, Pittsburgh, and soon to be Minona, those communities can participate in that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burst, questions?
Yes, thank you so much, Tom. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the creative land donation. How did that work? What does that mean?
So I'll talk about the Brayton Lot specifically because, you know, that's a, that has been a surface parking lot for decades and decades, right? And yet, really, the highest and best use of that parking lot is more than just a parking lot, right? It should be building, housing, all sorts of things. And so we needed a place for the contractor to store materials. And so by donating the Brayton Lot, we use that for the contractor as a staging area, and we got credit for that land towards our local match. Then FTA essentially gives, kind of gives that land back to the city to develop for transit-supportive land uses. And so right now, in the coming years, you'll see, you know, RFPs to develop that land on the city's behalf into transit-supportive uses. And then kind of the revenue that would come from the transit-supportive uses will help fund some of Metro's operational budget.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I was wondering, now you used two words when you were talking about the federal government, appropriated versus, what was the other word? I didn't catch that.
Apportioned.
Apportioned, okay. Thank you. Could you tell us what that means in layman's terms? What's the difference? If it's appropriated versus apportioned?
Oh, I wish. This one's hard. The federal, two federal bills appropriated, had advanced appropriations, which basically allocated money towards transit projects. And so that money is appropriated and it's there, but it hasn't been actually apportioned to specific projects yet, which means it hasn't been, yeah. I guess that's probably, that's the best way I can describe it.
Okay. And then just for my clarity, just for, I did have this question in the back of my mind. When we do something like BRT and we get funds from the federal government, we pay the cost and it gets reimbursed? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the North-South is the same? Are we going to come in with the same numbers where like 28% wasn't covered? And was it 20% wasn't covered on the East-West line? What will be the difference there?
We're still in project development, trying to understand it. We have a recommendation for almost $120 million from the federal government. We have kind of a sliding contribution of the DOT of $10 million or more, depending on how we interact with them on some other roads. The total cost of the North-South BRT could be between 160 and 180, and we're trying to value-engineer that so that our budget and our project match each other.
Okay. And thank you so much for the presentation. It's very interesting. We have a lot of good history, and it's interesting that the buses have always been subsidized, it sounds like, you know, for the great majority of the time, which is something I'm not sure that people realize.
Yeah. Could I, yeah. I, we have subsidized buses, but I also want to just clarify that we subsidize motor vehicle traffic, cars also. So the vast majority of the streets in the city are paid with your property taxes. And so where you park your car and where you drive your car is also kind of a city subsidy provides that service. And so I just want to say that we value all our modes of transportation. But I think mistakenly, we think, oh, we have to pay money for transit. But we pay money for all these other modes of transportation too. And so I think we just have to, I want people to understand that we subsidize all these things because we value them, and they need to be, they're part of the formula for us being a successful city.
Yeah, and I didn't mean that as a negative. And I think the case that you showed in the slide that, you know, it actually costs more to run the buses for the last, you know, that was like 100 years ago or whatever time period that was. So it's just something that cities do.
Yeah.
The last question that I wanted to ask you, do you know, well, actually, I'll just save this for another time. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Revere.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Tom. As you know, I very much enjoyed this presentation the first time you gave it a couple of years ago to the Downtown Rotary. In fact, it was, I think, one of the most favorite presentations of the year for many of us. And I appreciate the fact that it's updated since you first shared it. I also wanted to ask you about the future of passenger rail in our community. The, as you know, at the last Finance Committee meeting, but in closed session, there was a bit more of an update about passenger rail and future passenger rail station locations that were shared with those of us that were present. Is there a little more detail you could share with those of us that are watching tonight on that score, especially since you recently had the meetings? And then the second part of the question is, in your recent conversations with your colleagues at WISDOT and perhaps others, is there still some reason for optimism that the new administration in Washington might continue to let us proceed with due course and all this? And is WISDOT treating this under the same timeline they were prior to the election? Or is that now been changed?
I'll be a little bit opaque because, you know, the situation is kind of opaque, right? I think the site over there on Johnson Street, the Hooper Site, is perhaps still in the running. It won't be dismissed. It may not be the first preference for all of the different parties, but it's, it won't be eliminated. We don't understand how the federal government will approach the rail funding. I think it's fair to say that Amtrak is very interested in serving us in some way or another, and they are looking at creative options to serve us. So I think that's, and we'll see how, over the next three to five years, how that will play out, so.
Can you share maybe more specifically, Tom, what month we might see the city's Passenger Rail Station Study be released? And then also what WISDOT's timeline is and their consultant's timeline, as you know it?
Yeah, so the city's report was basically completed right around Christmas. And then the Wisconsin DOT asked us to go back and reconsider one or two sites. And so we've been meeting with property owners on those one or two sites. And so that's kind of, we just wanted to, they asked us to do due diligence. And so... to do due diligence. And so we have, I believe, you know, in the in the coming months, we'll see that. It probably won't say this is the site, but it probably will say, these four sites are not the site, you know, it'll provide some screening so that we narrow our choices. We are probably not the critical path in this. You know, Wisconsin DOT is the critical path in this. I think they're hoping to go into step two in the fall of 2025. And so they're they're progressing through the study, perhaps not as quickly as maybe, you know, we would like, but they're progressing through the study.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Tom. First time I heard you speak, you compared Madison to Austin, if you recall, and in the pre-BRT days, you talked, maybe you can remind us of, I think you were suggesting that we were something like where Austin was 15 years ago, and that if we didn't want to end up like Austin, we really need to move aggressively with BRT. I think that was the gist of it, but you may want to comment further. Thanks to the mayor's leadership, thanks to the support of this council, and thanks to your hard work and the hard work of your colleagues, we now have the East West BRT. And I appreciate in in the presentation, we also have a metro system that is among the best in the country.
Yeah.
Highly rated, much more so, I think, than people realize. Certainly, I didn't realize that. Yet there is among those naysayers out there, this suggestion that what we are actually doing is a war on cars, that there is some pro bicycle conspiracy out there of advocates and lobbyists who somehow or another have the ear of this council and this mayor, and that we're all anti-cars. Could you just speak a little bit about what multimodal transit options actually involves? Break that down in layman's terms, and why it is so important for us to continue moving in this direction?
Yeah, actually, I'm actually going to use an example, two examples. One is I was going by a bus stop on Cog Grove Road four days ago, and there was a young mother with their baby in a child carrier. It was nine o'clock, so it wasn't peak hour, wasn't peak hour, right? And so that would have been a bus line that in our previous system might not have come. But that young mother needed to get on that bus, you know, to to take her child to childcare or something like that. And so that's an important, that's providing transportation for that. But then let's say that young mother's, you know, four years farther down the line, right? And she has to get a child to childcare or and then to a soccer game. And then after the soccer game to the friends, right? Well, that same mother might end up having to use a car to make those trips, right? And both are okay. Like, we don't have to demonize one or the other, but we'd like to provide the choices for both, right? And so I think that's what we're we're trying to do.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So let's say thank you again to Tom for the presentation. And we will move on to item 40, which is Legisstar 86853, a substitute that amends the Economic Development Division's 2025 capital budget to transfer funds from TID 51 to the land banking program for costs associated with the purchase and various other costs relating to 1814 South Park Street for land banking purposes. On item 40, Alder Tischler, motion, please?
Yeah, motion to adopt substitute.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Thank you, Alder. On item 40, are there questions for staff? Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if Director Mikulajewski or someone could speak about land banking in general and what this means, the concept of land banking?
Director Mikulajewski?
Sure. Thank you, Alder, for the question. As indicated, we are purchasing this property as part of our land banking program in South Madison. And really, the the purpose is to combine it with some neighboring properties that we already own as a city to make a development ready pad that can support new housing, commercial space, and an expansion of Hyffetz Park. Taking a kind of a deeper dive at land banking within South Madison, as I think many of you know, we've made several purchases over the past five years in South Madison. And the reason that we've done so is that the city recently completed a South Madison plan. And at a time when there's significant private development pressure within South Madison, and we identified a desire to, over time, maintain space for existing South Madison residents and businesses, and also welcome new residents and businesses as well. And we felt from a policy perspective that the city really needed to take an active role in purchasing some of the property within South Madison, getting it ready for redevelopment, and then working with private developers to maintain affordability, both for residential and commercial uses. So this is really one of multiple purchases that we've made in recent years to help facilitate that goal of maintaining accessibility and affordability to existing South Madison residents and businesses in the long run, as this area is seeing significant development pressure, and to do so in such a way that supports implementation of the South Madison Plan.
Thank you, Matt. And how long might parcels like this be backed for? Could it be five years, two years, 10 years? Is it open ended at this point? In other words, is there any imminent reason why Sarah and any of the other businesses located here would have to think about moving?
Sure. This building has several existing tenants, and the the tenants have leases that run out until 2026. It is not the city's intent to have any businesses leave prior to the expiration of their lease. As such, we have no plans to demolish the building or do anything else with the building until at least the end of 2026, when the last lease runs out. That being said, we do know that it does take time to pull together an RFP process for the development of of these land bank properties. And to the degree that we are able to accommodate some of the tenants to remain past their current lease, if that would help them, we are certainly willing to have that conversation with those tenants.
And lastly, I know that in recent years, we passed the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program. There's a Commercial Ownership Assistance Program and other small business resources. Might any of these funds be available if if needed at the time of a of a move?
Yes, we have the Facade Grant Program, the Building Improvement Grant Program, the Commercial Ownership Assistance Program, and the Small Captive Program that are all potentially available to assist some of these tenants with finding new spaces within South Madison or elsewhere in the city.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of my questions were answered within the previous Alders' questions. But for Matt, you noted, you mentioned space for existing businesses. Is there already space available? For example, I believe Sarah's lease ends in May, so if she's not able to find something comparable, does the city have, because you mentioned existing businesses, like, is there space already identified for businesses who might be finding it a challenge to find some, like, does the city already have access to spaces, I guess, affordable spaces for folks in a situation?
Yes and no. We potentially have some space available at the Village on Park, but we are still reviewing some of our both needs and opportunities there to confirm exactly what would be available at the Village on Park. We though, we regularly work with businesses throughout the city with helping them try to find spaces for business expansions. We have not had any conversations with any of these tenants yet, because, as noted earlier, we don't currently own the building.
Yep.
And the council is hopefully going to approve that this evening. So we will have conversations with all the tenants. And actually, we have had actually some conversation with one of the tenants already. But we certainly will continue those conversations with those tenants to try to identify alternative locations for them to relocate, either in South Madison or elsewhere in the city, if they would prefer to go elsewhere.
Thanks. And then around current grants, I don't, and I could be wrong, and I'm hope I'm hoping that I am wrong. But for startup costs, for example, for a business to move from, you know, one location to another, and a startup cost maybe between $15,000 and $20,000, do we have, I don't remember us having a pot of money for that specifically. Can you just clarify that for me?
Yeah, we we, as a city, do not have any funds available for working capital. But we do have, through, for example, the Building Improvement Grant Program, funds available for capital improvements. And often, the expenses that a business will experience during the course of a move is with fixing up the new space that they would like to move into. And so the Building Improvement Grant Program can be used to make those investments into the physical space to to help the business with those costs.
And then I guess what would be helpful, and I I know I can circle back to Ruth, but if you can send or someone can send out to Alders, like, how how that grant has been accessed, and like, what, how has it been used, especially in this last, I don't know, two, three years? Are folks really utilizing it? And then I guess my last question is, in this in this item that we're taking up tonight, there's mention of commercial space for, you know, the future of the lot. Is there identified or in this space or in other spaces soon to come or have already purchased by the city, where it's identified specifically to address the lack of affordable spaces for small businesses, especially owned by women and folks of color, who don't have anything to work with, for example, or not much to work with to get up and going, but who are already operating?
We do not have, as of today, we do not have any spaces that are are ready to go. But we do know that this is a concern that many have within the community. And so as we move forward with preparing and issuing a request for proposals for those land bank properties that we already own, certainly, we're going to be mindful of wanting to partner with the developer that would be capable of providing more reasonably cost commercial space as part of the development projects.
Thanks. And then my last question is for either you or one of the the city attorney. Can we legally put that in the request for proposals to like, set aside X number of square feet to be affordable for these kinds of businesses, who especially are already located in South Madison, for example?
In our.
So I mean, I can start. I think the answer is yes. We have done this before. We, when we issued a request for proposal for the development that's now the Galaxy on East Washington Avenue, we were very specific that any proposal that was submitted had to have a full service grocery store, of which we now have Festival Foods. So in that case, we were very clear. If there was no grocery store, then we would not entertain the proposal. And Truman Olson as well, yes.
Perfect. Oh, sorry. One last question. I know I tried with you earlier. But just so for for businesses like Sarah and others, what what does, you know, initial next steps look like? What does it look like for the city to assist them in finding another space, I guess, even though we've already had a conversation, if you wouldn't mind repeating that?
Sure. So so I've already reached out to Sarah, and I believe a couple of my colleagues in Business Resources have as well. The first step is really going to be to schedule a time to sit down and have a conversation around what her space needs are, you know, how big of a space, where is the ideal location, what type of rent is, this is for all the tenants, are are folks interested in? And then we will start the process of of working with them to see what might be available. And we use a combination of some of the online databases that list commercial real estate to just scanning the neighborhood, because often spaces that would be good for small businesses aren't necessarily posted online. Sometimes it's just a for rent sign in the window. But we would, we would basically start by learning what the needs of the tenants are, and then work to see what we can find to help fulfill those needs.
And very literally, the last question. In this process, will you all make them aware of the Building Improvement Grant?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyate?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, a lot of the questions have already been asked by previous Alders. But can you please like, give like, example of probably a couple other establishments that businesses like Sarah that have been displaced, and what the city has done in order to accommodate so that for transparency reasons, so people feel a little bit more relaxed about the being able to be relocated?
Sure. So as a city, I know throughout the years, we have Village on Park, which is a property that we, of course, own through the Community Development Authority. We have successfully helped businesses that were looking for space locate in there. Again, we're still working on trying to pin down what might be available within the Village on Park to potentially help some of these particular businesses. But certainly, that's something that we've done in the past. But we routinely, within the Office of Business Resources, interact with businesses that are being displaced, because either their landlord wants to raise their rent because their landlord believes that they can gain a higher rent from another tenant, or there's a development project happening. You know, we've we see throughout the city, private development projects happening that do often displace the existing businesses that were there. So so while it is, it is, you know, it is stressful, it is challenging for entrepreneurs to go through this, it is not uncommon in the community. And it's certainly not uncommon with what we see with working with entrepreneurs. And we've certainly, you know, been able to provide some of the financial support through those programs and also help with with identifying spaces elsewhere.
Thank you.
The city attorney wants to clarify one thing.
I just want to clarify, as Director Mikulajewski mentioned, the city's intent is not to terminate any leases while the leases, the current leases are in place. And so when we use the term displaced, I don't want Alders to get the impression that we are terminating a lease and that the city has a legal obligation to compensate the the tenants, as we would if the city exercised eminent domain. And so the city does has, does have resources and programs to help displace tenants regardless of the reason. But in this instance, the city has not terminated any leases where we'd be required to compensate the tenants before the lease expires.
Well, thank you, Attorney, for that clarification. I just wanted to make sure that people know that there is, you know, other alternatives when their lease is up, and that we're, you know, doing our due diligence to make sure that other places are available and helping them. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
I appreciate all the all the other Alders interested in a property that's in my district. You could answer all the questions that I had. So that gave us a lot of information. I guess one question I have for you, Tom, is, excuse me, not Tom, I'm sorry. Would the city be willing to possibly extend a lease to such time that we get to demolition? Or and and maybe that's something that you and the client and I can meet and discuss?
Yes, definitely. We have, in other properties that we have land banked in South Madison, Yes, definitely. We have, in other properties that we have land banked in South Madison, we have extended leases of tenants that are in those properties. You know, recognizing that the goal is to, to help find a, a new home, because we will ultimately be demolishing but, the, the building. But that being said, you know, certainly, we have worked with other tenants that, hey, you know, I need another eight months, because I can't get access to this new space until eight months. And it's like, sure, we will extend, you know, for another eight months to allow you to remain.
So let's set up something to talk to the, the current tenants, you and I, and we could sit down and, and discuss those issues, so we can alleviate some of the concerns and fears of the tenants in that location.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So, thank you, Matt. The item has been moved and seconded. It does require 15 votes. Is there any discussion on item 40? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 40? Seeing no objection, recording unanimous vote in favor of item 40. That will bring us to the end of our agenda. Alder Curry, it's your turn. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? I'm hoping Alder Tischler isn't objecting, but...
I'm not objecting, but I neglected to say, to mention on item 68, that I work at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. It does not affect my, my, my vote earlier.
The clerk will note that. Thank you, Alder. Seeing no other announcements, then we stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.